And welcome to the Cedar Falls Committee, the whole meeting this May 21st, 2018. And I like to call this committee meeting to order. We have four items up for discussion tonight. One is Utility Board of Trustees Interview, Visitors and Tourism Initiatives Update, Speed Limit on South Main Street Update, and Bills and Payroll. At this time, I'd like to, first of all, let council know that we did the administrative interview on April 19th for Mayor Beth Sonason. I'll invite her up now to give a brief introduction, if you would, and then maybe some questions from council. Welcome.
Great, great. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the pre-interview a few weeks ago. I enjoyed that and enjoyed meeting some of you. So I'm here today to submit my application for trustees position in the Cedar Falls Utility Board. I've had the honor of being on the board for the last six years and have enjoyed that and hopefully contributed to the cause and just admire the utilities and hope to continue in that role going forward.
Very good. Thank you. Surely open up for council for questions. Mr. Whelan?
Just one question, as far as being a coal-fired utility, do you see future concerns on still using coal?
Well, it's interesting. The actual, we have two coal plants downtown, but they're rarely used. By and large, I would say it's primarily just for testing. We're part of the MISO network, which is Mid-America Independent Systems Operator, and in doing so, we're able to take advantage of a consortium of energy producers. So we really don't use the coal plants here so much anymore. We do have interests on the Missouri coal plants. There are three of them that we have part interest in. But our renewable rate right now is 28 percent. It's primarily wind. We're in, we're looking forward to Mid-America's investment. You've probably read in the Register about their investment. They're putting in 2,000 megawatts of wind between now and 2020. So they are a producer that we are able to be in that pool with. So we buy that off the market with them. So in that regard, we have a distinct advantage, being part of that network, to increase our renewable sense. The other thing is that the coal plants we do have are both gas-fired, which is much less, it's still a concern from a carbon perspective, but it's much less impactful. So we have the ability to convert to coal or gas. So one should be concerned about coal-fired plants, but there are mitigations that we employ now and going forward that look good.
Thank you for the in-depth answer.
Sorry.
No, I like it.
Get real excited with details.
More sustainability. Do you see any more initiative, expanding the solar, our solar garden that we have, or is there more opportunity for something like that?
Well, the solar garden you mentioned went online in 2016. It's 1.5 megawatt. So it's a drop in the bucket, really, of what our load is here. But it really was an important step for us, A, to get to know that business a little bit, to have the opportunity for the community to invest in solar if they chose, so choose, chose, excuse me. Where we find the efficiencies is really interesting. So I mentioned MISO, the ability that we're able to buy vast amounts of wind from them. But then the real money play right now is with energy efficiency. So energy efficiency, we often call it the third power plant, if you will. So we can save more money or get the bang for the buck, so to speak, by investing in energy programs. Just a quick example, more details, sorry. Quick example, our peak load was last in 2012 at 112 megawatts. So despite the fact that we've increased by 800 meters from 2013 to 2017, that we've never hit that peak load again. So that's a direct result of energy efficiencies through building codes, through individual citizens' actions, through rebates, through any number of actions. So that's kind of a remarkable fact. There's a whole lot more there that we can do on the energy efficiency side. But one hopes that we'll look for the opportunities and jump on them when we can.
Anything further from council? Mr. Cruz?
What is the overhead-to-underground project future look like? Is there a continuation of that for different parts of town, or?
I think it's very close to being finished, all but finished. There's a vast majority of lines that are below ground now, and that's all kinds of advantages in terms of maintenance and reliability and cost and so on. There will be lines that continue to be overhead for whatever reason. It might be that it's a higher transmission line, so they need to be more accessible. Energy underground kind of diffuses too, so there's an issue there. So that project is just about complete.
Anything further? Thanks, Mayor Beth. Thanks for your service.
Very good. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, of course. Next up is the Visitors and Tourism Initiatives and Update. We have our Tourism Cultural Programs Manager, Kim Manning, joining us this evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. I have a presentation to make, and as you know, we're celebrating our 30th anniversary this year. So it makes great sense to come to you and kind of give you an update on the initiatives that we've been involved with over the last short while and a little bit about our past 30 years as well. As you might know, we started out as a committee with the Chamber of Commerce, and in 2000, in the year 2000, we transitioned into a city division. Here, I've got my PowerPoint going. When we began, we had an annual budget in the range of $156,000, and we shared office space with the Chamber, as I said. It's my understanding that the very first grant that we awarded went to the College Hill Arts Festival. They're celebrating their 40th anniversary this year. Hotel motel tax has grown over the years from $156,000 to now it's over $878,000. We've added new hotels like the Country Inn and Suites, American, the Wingate, Best West, it's called the Best Western Plus now, Comfort Suites, Super 8, Suburban, and the Hilton Garden. As you know, there are plans for a new Hampton Inn downtown and a Town Place Suites by Marriott that will bring an additional 7,000 square feet of meeting space to the Hilton Garden Inn. There's also a new convention center proposed at the corner of Ridgeway and Hudson Road that will also have another hotel. This is exciting growth for the city. Another indicator that we use to keep tabs on our impact is visitor spending. The U.S. Travel Association considers someone traveling at least 50 miles from home to be a visitor. They track the direct spending of visitors on a county-by-county basis. And as you can see from this chart, visitors' spending in Blackout County has increased from $255.18 million in 2006 to $360 million in 2016. The Iowa Tourism Office also conducts research by surveying welcome center visitors. They tell us the average overnight visitor spends approximately $117 a day, and that day tripper spends $75 a day. This is new money imported into our community by people who come for a week or a short stay, and then they leave. So we don't have to educate them or provide the other services that we do to our residents. They come for a short time and they leave their money behind. Making Cedar Falls a top-of-mind destination helps with business recruitment and workforce development issues as well. Visitors help improve our quality of life by purchasing tickets at venues like the Astor Regent Theater, the Gallagher Blue Dawn Performing Arts Center, UNI football games, and the like. This helps make these options affordable and available to our local residents as well. So what does the Visitors and Tourism Division do to influence these numbers and encourage people to come? Our mission is to foster, market, service, and promote our community as a quality destination for visitors. We do this by distributing grants, purchasing advertisements, attending shows, consumer shows, and trade shows, and we create publications for our website and social media. And we recruit and place volunteers to greet and welcome our visitors and to help execute One of the ways we invest our hotel motel tax revenue in an attempt to generate visitors is through advertisements. This year, we will spend approximately $80,000 on advertisements promoting visits to our city for festivals, special events, sporting events, shopping, dining, meetings, and conventions and to ride the trails. Last year, we worked with ZLR Ignition, a marketing firm specializing in tourism marketing, to help us refine our brand and develop a new logo and tagline. We've had a lot of fun with our new theme, "We Know How to Weekend," inviting folks to visit Cedar Falls where they can do things they enjoy, like bicycling, shopping, dining, and where they can relax and connect with people that they love, where every day feels like a weekend. We target adult consumers with a primary demographic of women 35 to 54 in Iowa, southeast and south-central Minnesota, and southwest Wisconsin. We exclude Cedar Falls and a 30-mile radius of Cedar Falls, so you probably don't see many of our advertisements. At least, I hope you don't. We don't want to pay to advertise to our locals. So this are some images of our FanGen and Carousel ads that we run on Facebook with the help of ZLR Ignition. Here's some samples of the native ads that we run on the Internet. A native ad is nestled among other content that one might read while on the Internet. We do, of course, continue to invest in print media as well, but a lot of it has moved to the digital arena. Here's a look at our placement schedule. It's kind of hard to read, but you can tell how we spread our advertisements out throughout the year. We also produce publications to promote the city. We partner with the Waterloo Convention and Visitors Bureau and The Courier to produce 60,000 visitor guides each year. These guides are supported by advertisements from about 85 businesses and organizations, and they're distributed through the Welcome Center system throughout the state, in local information centers, hotel rooms. We stuff them in the 2,500 welcome bags we stuffed last year. And we also provide printed calendars of events, meeting facilities guides, and maps and other publications. We generate a great deal of digital content these days. Our website enjoys an average of 6,200 users a month and is updated daily. We maintain a presence in social media, and we have profiles on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and Pinterest. As you likely know, these platforms require interaction, and it's not just us blasting our message out, but we need to listen to what folks are enjoying, what we need to improve on, and those types of things. We produce a weekly newsletter that I know many of you receive. It's called Hospitality Highlights. It's meant to be a quick read at the start of the week to update you on upcoming events and news of interest to the hospitality industry. Once a month, we take a deeper dive and produce the Weekender Newsletter. This publication is targeted towards potential visitors and consumers. It includes photos and inspiration and details about upcoming events and attractions and other little-known facts. Every quarter, we target group tour operators and email a newsletter to them as well. It includes sample itineraries and information about upcoming events and group-friendly restaurants and businesses. If you're not on our mailing list, we encourage you to subscribe. You simply visit our website at cedarfallstourism.org and click on the "Connect with Us" tab in the corner and follow the prompts. We currently send to 536 Hospitality Highlights subscribers and 360 Weekender subscribers. We also mail to 800 group tour leaders. In addition to the publications we generate, we work to establish relationships with travel writers in hopes they'll write a complimentary article and review about our destination and bring visitors here. Here's a sample of a pitch sheet that we created to send to writers to inspire them to write about us. Just this past weekend, we had someone here from IA Magazine in Des Moines, and they'll be doing a feature about Cedar Falls in an upcoming publication. We regularly send out event dates and information about new venues and upcoming events, special anniversaries, that sort of thing, to media outlets to encourage them to write about us. And we monitor TripAdvisor and other similar services to engage visitors and potential Another way we work to get the word out about our city is to attend trade and consumer shows, to conduct business, to showcase to businesses and consumers alike. Some of these shows are appointment-based, and some of them are set up like an exhibit where folks will walk the aisles and visit our exhibit and learn about us. B-to-B examples include Circle Wisconsin, the American Bus Association Marketplace, the National Tourist Association Marketplace, and Travel Iowa Marketplace. Examples of B-to-C shows include Canoe Copia in Madison, the Iowa Bike Expo in Des Moines, and the Outdoor Adventure Expo in Minneapolis. We set aside approximately $70,000 in marketing and tourism development grants each year. Applications are submitted to the Visitors and Tourism Board, and they carefully consider the merits of each. They take into account the $117 in spending per day when they make their deliberations, and they also determine whether the event is new and in need of assistance, or what other services we might be able to extend to support them. In honor of our 30th anniversary, we did a quick calculation and discovered that we've awarded close to $1 million to over 90 different organizations over the years. Our staff is small, yet mighty, and we couldn't possibly own enough events to create the kind of impact the grant program does. This year, we have awarded $59,000 so far, and we estimate that those events will return $2,750,000 in direct spending. Now, that direct spending doesn't even include what we're able to bring in through the Cedar Valley Sports Commission. We invest with that organization as well. When we recognize the outstanding sporting facilities that we have in the community and the strong impact that sporting events bring, we partnered with the Waterloo Convention and Visitors Bureau and created the Sports Commission. That's been around for about 15 years, and we regularly invest in those activities to bring events to town. It's a very lucrative market with us. Ashley Johnson is our new executive director for that organization, and she's doing an outstanding job. As marketing methods have evolved over the years, so have we. There's new tools that event owners are able to use, nearly free email, marketing, websites, and social media. So we've tailored and modified our marketing grants to help support event expenses and such to be more helpful to these folks. A stunning number of our events and festivals exist solely due to the efforts of volunteers. And we recently got to thinking about that and have provided some training opportunities to help sustain those efforts, and we partnered with the Volunteer Center of the Cedar Valley to do so. We are also looking forward to offering a recruitment draft day that'll have a fun theme in January to help do some additional recruitment, to help these groups sustain themselves with more additional volunteers. We work directly with dozens of groups as they plan, promote, and execute their events. The Cedar Falls Visitor Center serves as a contact point for some of these volunteer-led organizations. And since we have staff on hand to answer the phone and answer routine questions, we do as much of that as we can, and then we refer them on to the individual boards for, excuse me, for specific questions. We also gather hotel managers and attraction and event representatives on a quarterly basis so that we can allow them to network with one another and establish relationships for the purpose of cross-promotion and collaboration. Quite often, a lot of the work that we do is about creating partnerships with other organizations so that we can collaborate and cross-promote one another. Our Visitor Center has opened 362 days a year thanks to the help of our envoy volunteers. They began back in 1992, and since our Visitor Center opened in 2004, we've served 118,000 people, averaging 790 walk-ins a month. Volunteers have logged 24,000 hours to staff the Visitor Center. They provide hospitality and various events. Like the photo you see, there's Sid Morris and Dick Eads helping out at the Iowa Trap In addition to the envoy volunteers, we work with a number of dedicated and talented volunteers serving on our boards and committees. Mayor Brown has appointed this fine collection of volunteers to serve on our board, which is currently led by Annie Gogler, who, by the way, is a second-generation board member following in her mother's footsteps, Annie Humble, or Arlene Humble. There are a number of other folks we want to work with and who want to work with us as well, so we formed a marketing committee. This group helps generate ideas and vet them as well. They also help host community activities and help us with our marketing plan. I mentioned our small but mighty staff a little bit earlier. I'd like to acknowledge Becky Wagner, who's been with us for 16 years, Vicky Bailey's been with us for 13 years, Linda Mon for three years, and our newest member, Deb Lewis, is about to celebrate her first anniversary. Unfortunately, she's not even in our photo, but she's here. We got to get a new photo. These ladies are all part-time, capped at 28, 29 hours a week with limited benefits, yet they produce an exemplary amount of high-quality work. Becky schedules volunteers and pays the bills and arranges hour-by-hour itineraries for our visiting groups. She, usually, these groups arrive by motor coach, and she plans their whole day for them. Vicky manages the event calendars, both online and the printed calendar, and she produces the Weekly Hospitality Highlights Newsletter. Linda manages our advertising, evaluating opportunities, and working with the city's graphic designer to put the ads together, and she also monitors their impact. I'd like to take this opportunity to mention how wonderful it is for us to work with Angie Lindley, our designer for the city. She is very talented and extremely easy to work with. That's been a great benefit to us. Let's see, Linda also works with our blogs, our social media, our website, and she writes the Weekender Newsletter. Deb manages the gift shop and tracks attendance to all of the events and facilities, and she helps to manage the trails-focused newsletter and website. We almost always have a UNI student in the office as well. Usually, it's a Leisure Services graduate that's wrapping up their coursework, and we usually have them with us for 40 hours a week for a semester. That's been a great benefit to us, and we learn as much from them as they do from us. So that gives you kind of a glimpse of what we do to bring visitors to the community. We aren't always winners, though. There are times that we don't get the event. In fact, we recently lost the preseason national wrestling tournament, and that's been a really good event for us. It's a very competitive market, and so we're working hard to replace that piece of business, and we're also looking to be more competitive and implement strategies that will help us attract and retain events. We'll be coming to you with some parameters for some more generous sponsorship programs and other ways for us to remain competitive. We're working on improvements to our online calendar of events, making it more easy to use, and we're working with Monday Creations to create some additional videos. You really have to have video content to be taken seriously in the social media realm, and so we're working towards that end. Looking ahead, we're highly encouraged by the private investment that's being made by the Hilton Garden Inn, the Hampton Inn, Open Door Hospitality, Eagle View Properties, Western Home, and others. We're preparing to ramp up our efforts to sell to meetings and conventions with the additional conference space that we'll have available, and we look for some future successes in that area. We truly appreciate the support that you've provided to us, and we look forward to some continued successes as we work together to make Cedar Falls a great destination.
Thank you, Kim.
I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Any questions for Kim? Comments, Mark?
Yeah, I appreciate everything you guys do. You guys get a lot of things done with four or five people on your staff, for the most part. I assume the volunteers play a big role in that, too.
Yeah, they do.
Whitewater continues to be a topic around here, and I'm curious if you see, if you're, it's on your radar as far as marketing and from other communities, Charles City and Elkhader at some of these events you go to and what they're doing to promote that as well.
Yeah, we do see, when we go to the Canoe Copia Show in Madison and the Outdoor Adventure Expo in Minneapolis, our friends from Manchester and Elkhader and Charles City are there at those shows. And really, the paddling goes quite well with bicycling, so that's kind of why we're there, because we see that people enjoy both of those activities. And they're doing a nice job of promoting those, and we'd be right in the middle. We'd make a nice hug-and-spoke kind of a relationship there.
Thank you.
Anything else for Kim? Great presentation. Appreciate your staff being here and a couple board members as well, coming for support. You got a great group.
Thank you.
You did a great job. Thank you, Kim. Moving on to the next item, I'll introduce Supervisor Chase Scroggy Shreg, sorry. What? Scroggy, sorry about that, Chase.
You're fine.
Sounds like a friend of mine, but pronounced differently. The topic here is speed limit on South Main Street, University Avenue to Green Hill Road.
Well, thank you, Mayor, Council. Hopefully, I'll be, I'll give you a little history on South Main Street speed limit. First off, I'd like to give you a little overview of the entire corridor of Main Street as a whole. Basically, from Green Hill Road on the bottom part of the screen there, all the way to 12th Street has been 35 miles an hour. And then continuing north from 12th Street all the way to 6th Street has been 25 miles an hour. So tonight, I'm going to talk to you about that portion up there that's highlighted in red, and that is south from university all the way in red, and that is south from University all the way to Orchard Drive. So that section, in two thousand and five, the speed limit, like I said, it was thirty-five miles an hour. In two thousand and five, it was recommended to lower it to twenty-five miles an hour. The study showed at that time that the eighty-fifth percentile of speed, basically, for those of you who do not know what eighty-fifth percentile is, it's used in engineering studies and posted speed limit recommendations that the eighty-fifth percentile of the drivers perceive that to be a safe-traveling speed. So that speed in two thousand and five was forty-two miles an hour, and that was posted as the thirty-five mile-an-hour speed limit. So at that time, being that the Falls Aquatic Center was being built in two thousand and five as well, it was determined that the higher pedestrian traffic crossing South Main, it would be best to lower it to twenty-five miles an hour. Two thousand and ten, at that time, we just reviewed the speeds, did the study again. The eighty-fifth percentile at that time was thirty-seven miles an hour, so it was lowered, being that the speed limit, the posted speed, speed limit was lowered to twenty-five miles an hour. In twenty, late twenty-fourteen, we looked at it again. Speed limits were the same. They showed to be about thirty-six to thirty-seven miles an hour for the eighty-fifth percentile. And at that time, it was recommended to raise it back up to, to thirty, and that's kind of where we're at today. So the referral was to look at it, to going back to thirty-five. I believe the engineering recommendation for that would be to maintain that speed limit of, of thirty miles an hour.
It was short and sweet. Yeah, it's fine. Any questions?
Along the whole corridor, if you have questions on speed limit?
Chase, I'm just curious, what the, what's the overriding rationale? If the thirty-fifth percentile is thirty-six, thirty-seven miles an hour, why we wouldn't mind with that, then?
Um, as in any case, posted speed limits, I mean, the drivers are gonna kind of do what they want. So the eighty-fifth percentile generally is five to seven miles an hour over the posted speed limit, because that's how drivers, what they perceive to be safe. It all depends on the corridor. I mean, if the homes are set back from, from the street, if the street's narrow, if there's trees adjacent to the curb, all that, or parking on, street parking, all that's going to affect what they perceive as safe. And in this case, that's, that's what they're gonna travel, travel at. So, you know, it's kind of a teamwork effort between what should be posted and, and law enforcement, so.
Anything further, or Chase? There's not necessarily, I guess I'll look around, and the recommendation is to stay at the same limit it's at. Any thing further, comments? Leave it as is? Thank you, sir.
Listen to the public?
Pardon me?
If there's people here to speak to this?
Typically, we don't at committee meetings, if you have something in particular or anyone in particular.
I thought some people were here to speak to that, but maybe they don't want to, or can we allow them?
Committees typically is informative. We have a few minutes, if you want, to open it up to different folks. I think we're in good shape here as far as a typical committee meeting's concerned. Thank you. Item four is our motion for bills and payroll.
Kurt?
Could you make some comment?
Well, typically, we don't at committees. If you keep it very brief, that's fine. Yep.
Very brief, very brief. So Kurt Olson, thirty-seven oh seven, South Main Street, and thank you for keeping it at the thirty miles an hour. And one of the things I would like to see that I haven't seen since we've had all the new traffic and that's being dumped onto South Main Street, I would like to see a higher police or some kind of presence that's going to take a look at the, the attitudes of the drivers that we have coming up and down South Main Street. It's a considerable difference during the rush hours of morning, noon, and night, that we have a lot of drivers who aren't from the area, they're trying to travel through, but they're traveling through at a lot faster miles than five or six miles over the speed limit. And we have a lot of pedestrian traffic, so if I could make any kind of suggestion, and that would be, can we get some kind of present there that we can let them know that they can't overtake or overspeed, they need to respect the type of street and the people that are around, living, working, walking on the street? Like be able to see that, at least have some kind of presence so that they know that they're traveling within a neighborhood and the, and the people that live there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, yes, go ahead, Rosemary. If it, if it's towards the speed limit, absolutely come on up. Anything else could be more formalized if there needs to be some sort of referral set for council, a normal council meeting? If you have a couple minutes worth, Rosemary, help yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was the person who asked to have the speed limit put up a number of years ago, and we did get a little start on it. And since I have traveled that twice a day, most days, and the people on the, the, that particular part of the road, if you come in from South Main and the Western Home community, it's thirty-five to Green Hill. If you go from Green Hill to where it is stopped at thirty, and then you go right across University Avenue, it's thirty-five again, I find that very unnecessary, I guess. Thirty-five is not a fast speed to be. Most of the people stay pretty close to it, and with the more and more traffic on it, I think that the slower you make people go there, the more upset they may be. We have a lot of traffic already from that particular corner from Green Hill down to University. So I'm just asking you again, I think I came here two months ago something and asked to have that raised, and I didn't come back because we were doing all the information or all the upgrade there around the dog park. And I, that's not a time to change speed limit anywhere and all that mess. So I would like to say, I think that if, if we can manage from Eighteenth Street to University at thirty-five miles an hour with all those entrances, we ought to be able to handle from University to the end of Western Home with the fewer entrances that are on there without causing any problem and making the driving public a little bit more convenient for us. So I'm asking you again, I did, I wasn't sure whether it was gonna be taken to a committee or taken to the police department. I haven't seen any black numbers on, you know, normally, when you are asking for a speed limit upgrade or down, you put those black things across there and tells you how many cars and how fast they're going, all that. I don't know that that's happening there. So anyway, I'm still asking for it. My neighbors are asking for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Go ahead, sure.
Hello, Mike Alveson. I live at thirty-six twenty-seven South Main Street. I sent you guys a letter. I believe it's in your packet about keeping it at thirty miles an hour. My proposal is to actually lower South Main between Green Hill and Orchard thirty. I put in some detail exactly, you know, how long is, is it gonna take the average driver between thirty-five and thirty mile-an-hour to get between Orchard and University and also Green Hill to, to Orchard? I don't think it's appropriate to raise the speed limit to thirty-five in that area. There's a lot of pedestrians, a lot of cyclists, there's the pool, and I guess in response to the previous comment, I think it would be almost more appropriate to, to lower South Main to thirty mile-an-hour.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Do you have one?
Yeah, I'm sorry, is someone else?
No, I was gonna ask a question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, open it up.
I didn't want to sequence her in here. I guess this would be to the speed trailers, is that what they're called, Jeff? Where, are they just counting, or are they somehow registered the speed of the vehicles to know these averages for engineering, or how is this done?
Well, the radar trailer just displays the speed. It doesn't record. Usually, when we have the speeds recorded, it's, it's Stephanie's engineers that have the devices that they put on the roadway that they can do a speed study, and the cars can't detect it, so they're not influenced by, by the radar or anything else of that nature.
Okay. So I don't have to worry about that speed trailer ticketing me?
And we can certainly put it out there, and the problem with that?
You do.
That location is you have to put it up on somebody's yard, because there's no way to park it along the street there. And we have done some traffic enforcement there as well, but it is one of those roads where there's just a couple of spots you can sit without, again, parking on the grass or somebody's driveway, which we, which we don't do unless they ask us to.
Okay.
But we will certainly increase the, our efforts out there.
I don't know about anybody else, but I, I probably get more feedback from people in neighborhoods complaining about speeding, and I know there's no answer. Every neighborhood's different, every street's different, but Jeff and I talked a little bit, that might not, in my mind, might not hurt to have an, an ongoing discussion about some strategies to help slow people down. Even if we had just appointed our officers to rotate, you know, sit someplace for several days and remind people that we're out there, but I know slowing, we talked about lowering speed limits, people go ahead and speed anyway, speed bumps don't work, stop signs don't work. But I think the idea of a more presence, you know, people recognizing that our offices are sitting and watching, you know, gonna pull people over if they're going too fast. It's, I know there's no way of controlling it, but still wouldn't hurt to have a, kind of a ongoing discussion about how do we respond to some of these concerns, short of putting a stop sign on every corner. Thought.
Good discussions, hearing and seeing no more. Move on for item four. Is there a motion for bills and payroll, please?
Motion. Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That'll conclude this evening's committee of the whole meeting. We'll wait to the top of the hour for the regular city council. Thank you.